Can you hear us in on go to meeting?
Gary did it.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
These masks will fog, ah, this ain't gonna work. The mask fogs your glasses up like.
We do the, this first before we do the pledge allegiance, right?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Do I welcome to the meeting first, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we didn't get, we didn't get home till about nine.
I figured you'd party hard, that's what I figured.
I didn't.
I don't need the microphone for that, though. Kind of like my dad, you don't need the microphone.
That's all right, we, we'll reschedule the meeting.
Yeah, we'll be around.
Yeah, not like we're even town.
Are we having the January, the first meeting in January?
We have the meeting.
No, that's on my list, I'm, no, it's, you know, the real problem is, is getting the agenda ready the week before, cause everybody's on vacation.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Yeah, and so, it's not necessarily that day, it's the agenda part of it that becomes the issue.
Alrighty. This conference will now be recorded.
You ready?
We are ready.
Here we go, okay, well, I'd like to, uh, welcome everyone to the December tw- twenty-first county, city council meeting. Uh, the council chambers are open to the public during the city council meeting, meetings, with social distancing measures, mask requirements in place. Due to the occupancy and seating limitations, members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meeting by, via the go-meeting venue or by phone. If you have joined us with the go-to meeting or by phone, please mute your, yourself unless you are speaking. Um, okay, so now, I think we'll go to the pledge allegiance. Please stand, join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Lord who has sent us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, rule call.
Councilmember Crummick.
Here.
Councilmember Ballinger.
Here.
Councilmember Swift.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Leggero.
Here.
And Mayor Alves.
Here.
All right, um, let's see what our first item will be tonight, it's, uh, moving down the consent counter right off the bat, it looks like.
Yes.
And I'm gonna read this before we do that, it says this ti- this is the time for public?
Oh, no, not yet.
Not yet?
That'll be on, uh, the matters presented from audience, so.
Okay, okay.
This, you're just gonna do your consent calendar.
Alrighty then, I will accept the motion for the items on the consent calendar.
I move to accept the consent calendar in its entirety.
I'll take a second.
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 All right, is there any more discussion on that? Okay, we'll accept the motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, five oh. Okay, let's move to the next item here, what do we got? Uh, staff communications.
So, mayor and council, before you tonight are the monthly reports from, for the treasures, uh, report, the police department, animal control, development services, building department, public works, water department, and the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and staff is available to answer any questions you might have on those.
Are there any questions on, for staff?
Uh, none for me.
We're good?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of other items, um, earlier in the year, when we had appointed new planning commissioners, uh, there, it was brought up about having a joint workshop with planning commission and the city council.
Okay.
So, we are looking at trying to do that on Tuesday, January nineteenth, at six P M. before the regular council meeting.
Hang on, let me write it down.
Um, so I, did I say January nineteenth?
You did.
Okay, all right, six P M.
Okay, would you send that out to us?
Yes, yes. So, um.
Twenty-ninth, six P M.
The nineteenth at six P M., and then we're.
Nineteenth, not the twenty-ninth.
The nineteenth, yeah, it's a Tuesday, cause the Monday is a holiday, so our council meeting is on Tuesday, the nineteenth.
Six P M.
Yeah.
Joint meeting.
And then, um, I would entertain any agenda items that, um, council may have for that. We also may have a developer presentation regarding a potential senior housing project, too.
Wonderful.
So, um, we're still working out those details, but if anybody has a specific agenda item, um, I'm open to that.
Okay, good.
Uh, and then, just a note, city offices are closed, uh, the twenty-fourth, the twenty-fifth, and New Year's Day, um, and we are skeleton crews right now, cause of vacations. Um, myself and Chief Lackey will actually be on vacation next week, Justin's on vacation this week, but he'll be back next week, and Dominique should be here next week also, um.
Who acts as city manager when you're gone?
Typically, it's the police chief, but they always reach out to me, Dominique or Justin can handle typically anything, any issues. Um, don't foresee anything on, in that week, but I'm always available by phone.
Good enough.
Uh, the meeting of January fourth, right now, our intentions is to go dark.
Twenty-fourth of January, dead.
And that's primarily because the week before, so many people are typically out, so it, getting the agenda together is, uh, usually a little challenging.
Okay.
Around the holidays, um, and that's all I got for staff communications.
All right, any other questions from anybody here, online, uh, here at the dais, anybody? Okay, then we're gonna move on.
Under staff communications.
Oh, go ahead, Dominique.
This is Dominique. Um, the first item I wanted to let everyone know is that we have opened up our community development block grant notice of funding availability. Um, there's approximately seventy-five thousand dollars available through C D B G., and so, we've put out the application, and we've mailed it out to all of the nonprofit groups in the area that provide services in Escalon. So, if anybody knows of any other groups or somebody that may be interested in doing, or doing community, um, services or anything like that, and looking for some type of funding to send them our way, and we can work with them on trying to help them complete applications to get some money for their services that they're providing. Um, the second item I have, uh, is related, if you may recall, back in September, uh, we had a resident in town, uh, that had spoken virtually at our meeting regarding a chicken coop, um, and their, their neighbor having a chicken coop and requesting that council, um, update the municipal code to, to require a fifteen-foot setback, uh, for all chicken coops, and at that time, council, um, you know, did not ask staff to move forward with doing so. We have received that request again, uh, from the resident. Um, they also requested that we inspect that chicken coop again, and which we did, um, city staff has been out to the chicken coop at three to four times, um, and there has been no issues with it, uh, no, no, nothing wrong with it to, to declare it a, a public nuisance, so at this time, unless council says otherwise, we'll move forward with advising them that we will not be, uh, making changes to the municipal code at this time.
Well, you know, if, if they complain about it constantly, something's wrong. I mean, I don't understand why they've got nothing better to do, except complain about the neighbor's chickens. So, if they're complaining, and you went out and inspected, and you found nothing, I, I don't understand. I have not been there, but I've heard about it, and he says that it smells, the owner says that it smells, and it's adjacent to his window in his bedroom. Uh, if I were a neighbor and I were in this situation, I think I'd be a little more sensitive to my other neighbor by doing that. But, I don't know, I just think it's not a good situation, when somebody who's lived there as long as they have, have somebody move in, and all of a sudden be uncomfortable. I think there's something wrong with that. I think we need to.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm.
I think we need to address it, I think we need to make sure that if this situation is encroaching on their peace and quiet, and their, their, uh, quality of life issue, we have a problem.
Exact, well, and that's the problem that we have, is because we've had different staff members go out and have not found any nuisance odor, smell, or anything, um, actually have complimented the build of the chicken coop, um, and those have been, some of those have been unannounced visits, so there, it's not like the owner of the chicken coop knew we were coming, they were unannounced visits when they've gone out there.
But none of us slept there at night with a window open next to it either. So, I don't, I'm just saying, if you wanna take everything into account, so I, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about this, because I don't want to slide by and have these people constantly aggravated. Uh, there was never a problem before they moved in, so now we have a problem, so I think we need to address that problem.
Yeah, well, that's where I'm coming from, too, I'm a little puzzled with that situation, too, because I have looked at, gone to both houses on different occasions, you know, looking for something, knowing, you know, know what I know about, you know, urban, urban chickens and stuff like that, and, you know, good hygiene, cause obviously, good hygiene is paramount, and you're gonna have chickens in town. And I will concur, in terms of how they built that cage, and how they built the whole thing, including the drainage off the, off the top, uh, they went by the code, they know the code, and they went by the code, and so, I kept looking for some kind of an issue. The one day that I was there, I'm next door visiting, I think the neighbor that had an issue with that, um, I did notice, so there's a little bit, right at their water trough, a little bit of water on the, on the course, what they do, they have gravel for drainage, as well as pine shavings that you typically get, like a tractor supply, okay? They're pretty aromatic, so I noticed a little bit of, a little bit of moisture down there, though, okay, here we go, you know, try and smell it, try and smell it, cause if you have a chicken issue, you're gonna smell it, even with a little bit of moisture. Couldn't find anything.
Chickens are there.
Three.
Three, that's our limit?
So, yeah, I, I looked for it, I couldn't find any problem.
The limit of animals, cause they have dogs, too, so they actually had more chickens to begin with, but when we made our first visit, they were informed, and I think they had five at that time, and they, so they got rid of two of them.
Why do we have barn animal chick in the city limits?
The code allows for chickens and within city limit.
It's not prohibited, so.
Yeah, it's not prohibited, there's, there's a few in the, in the, in town.
I was gonna say, there are quite a few in town.
Yeah.
Really, I'm not aware of that.
If they, if they do their job, and if they take care of it well, uh, you'd never know.
Have we talked to the other side and asked them if it would be inconvenient for them to relocate it?
Yes.
And they said, forget it?
Yeah, they, I mean, they don't wanna move it to the backyard, they've built it in there, and I think it may be, is it attached, Dominique, do you recall?
Can't be attached.
They, they have attached it to the side of their house, and it matches with the side of their house, and then they also in, uh, in, uh, installed the storm drain with it as well, to, so that any rain or runoff would go back into their own yard.
That's a tough situation.
So, it's very, it's very, very nicely made, I, I have to say, just about anybody that's gone out there, that's the first thing they say is, is, wow, that's the, the nicest chicken coop I've ever seen.
Well, it looks good, and the other thing, you know, and I, I was out there, especially when I was out there next door, uh, with the, the, you know, the people that had an issue with it, you know, I kept thinking, okay, what's your prevailing wind, you know, and, you know, which is normally gonna be from the northwest, so that would take any order, if there was an odor out into the street versus into the bathroom, and I think, well, how about a south wind, you know, in the case of a storm? And I'm thinking, well, you'd have to have an odor first, and again, now granted, this was in the middle of summer, okay, and there was a little tiny wet area there, I mean, I'm talking about like this wet area, you know, from their water trough, that I could see looking over the fence, and, um, I mean, I, hey, i- if I smelled something, I'd tell you guys, but it is a good, it's a decent operation, so.
I just feel bad that they're uncomfortable, now that they've lived there for those many years, and now all of a sudden, they're uncomfortable, that's just, it doesn't, you know.
I would agree with that, I gotta, I gotta question, do you have an ordinance, if it wasn't a chicken coop, and it was a side yard, and we had a gate on both ends, and you had two dogs that you're allowed to have, and they had a dog pen basically there, do we have an ordinance for how often they're supposed to pick up the dog excrement?
Well, we don't.
Or anything like that, I mean, I'm just, I'm not trying to equate the both.
No, I, I understand, what, what we're getting at is a nuisance, where we talk, what we're talking about is nuisance.
Yeah, so, if, if they didn't clean their dog pen, and there was odors, and some, and the neighbor complained, and you go out there and you smell the odors, then that's considered, you could be considered a nuisance, and they would need to obey that.
Because that supersedes all the codes.
Just asking, I'm trying to.
Well, it makes good sense.
But the dog run, you know, I mean, dog runs on the side of houses are allowed. Yes.
Hey, everybody, this, this is Mark Velasquez, I just wanna remind F. that, um, this is not an agenda item, it was brought up under staff communications, and we've had the beginnings of a wonderful discussion, my suggestion would be, um, if the council wants to continue discussing it, to put it on the agenda for the next time.
It's not a bad idea. I don't think we can set it, set, let it sit the way it is, I think that's just not reasonable. We gotta figure out some kind of solution, I don't know what it is, but you can't, just can't leave it the way it is.
I don't know, I just hope that nobody's trying to weaponize anything, you know, any, uh, ordinances or anything like that, that's all, that's, I just don't know.
Well.
You know, I, personally, I think we're a little too far off from making any kind of a conclusion, you know, and then on top of that, I think you gotta tread lightly with that kind of, uh, ordinance change, too, cause I think you'll end up capturing, uh, a good portion of the town, uh, in that.
So, Mark, could we just, at the next meeting that we have, put a discussion item on there?
Certainly.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Okay, and we won't bring back any ordinance change or anything like that, then that would just give them the opportunity to make some more discussions, and, and maybe we make another visit to the site or something, or.
We gotta, I, at least we have to make an effort, a good faith effort, and then, obviously, if there's nothing we can do, there's nothing we can do, but I'd like to do one more, good faith effort.
It's worth a review of the ordinance.
Yeah, there's no reason you can't put it on for discussion only, invite them to come and speak, if they want to come and speak, and whoever else.
I think I recommend that as well.
Community would like to speak on the topic, and then take direct, take direction from that.
Hey, Mark, is it possible for other council members to come see for themselves firsthand, uh, the situation, what do you think?
Well, um, I wouldn't go not, everybody knocking on doors. Um, you know, obviously, you driven by, uh, like council members, you indicated you drove by, it took away if you looked at it from outside.
No, I always did more than that.
But, um, you know, a- at some point, they might feel, um, picked upon, um, they've already had staff come out several times, even unannounced, to do inspections. Um, I, I'm not saying no, I ju- I would just refrain from everybody, um, wanting to talk to them individually. If you wanna drive by, sure, and then, you know, let them come to the meeting and address everybody and all the questions, so they don't have to do it five times over and feel like they're being harassed, some people will feel like they're being harassed, even though, of course, you guys are all there, just trying to gain information. I, I'd start with the, I would start with the meeting, and then go from there.
Okay?
Just discussion.
Let's do that.
Okay. Dominique, that was all of your staff communications, right?
Correct, yes, so we'll add that to that second meeting in, in January.
Yes, okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on to matters presented from the audience. This is the time for the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda, that is within the authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to maximum of five minutes. We will first take any public comment from anyone on the phone. Seeing there's no comment on the phone, we're gonna move to the next, and the next will be taking comment from the go-to the meeting venue. Is anyone there? Well, it doesn't seem like anyone's gonna play, so we're gonna move to the last one here, next, we'll take any public comment from members of the audience. Okay, we got a mad rush. All right, good enough, so, since there's no comment from the audience, we'll move on to public hearing to consider the following. Administrative matters, considering the project proposal for the proposition sixty-eight per capita grant. Staff?
Yes. So, council, um, was notified at the meeting of November sixteenth, at the California Department of Parks and Recreation's Office of Grants and Local Services Per Capita Program allocation, funded through the Park and Water Board of two thousand eight, Act of two thousand eighteen. The per capita allocation for the city of Escalon is one seventy-seven, nine fifty-two, and we're also receiving four thousand six hundred nineteen dollars in urban county per capita funds. City of Escalon is eligible to receive a total of a hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars, funds for a qualified project. The city will be required to match twenty percent of the project funds, estimated to be roughly forty-six thousand dollars. The first step in the process was the passage of the resolution, presented and adopted at November sixteenth, um, twenty-twenty meeting. The next step will be submitting an application package with the proposed qualified project, no later than June thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. The funds are available for local park re- rehabilitation, creation, and improvement. Grant, grant recipients are encouraged to utilize awards to rehabilitate existing infrastructure, and address deficiencies in neighborhoods lacking access to the outdoors. Any property that the grant funds are used on will be required to have a deed restriction for twenty to thirty-year period for recreational purposes only. This restriction does limit the use of the parcel to only recreation or open space. Staff proposes that the project be the replacement of the bathroom at Hogan Innis Park with a new prefabricated bathroom. The project is re- recommended based on the results from the community survey conducted in two thousand nineteen, where the most desired project was a new public bathroom. The top two projects were upgrades to the bathroom and additional parking, and in fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty, the city created the overflow parking. Staff has reached out to a vendor with a prefabricated bathroom and received a proposal for two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. This is a proposal, this proposal was made without a fight, a site visit, and may change slightly. The company also provided additional information on the building, and the proposal and the building information is attached to the staff report. So, staff is looking for discussion, um, regarding this recommendation from the city council, as the proposed project for the use of the grant funds, whether, um, this prefab is, um, something that we wanna go through, if the bathroom project itself is what we wanna move forward with, or if you want staff to look at something else. Um, I just don't, staff doesn't wanna spend time on something that is not desired by the council.
Gentlemen, what's your, uh, any feedback here?
Well, from what I recall, that was a pretty, uh, pretty good survey that was done back then, and, yeah, I do recall that this was the number one, um, project, um, and so, looking at, you know, what you're looking at, you're estimating, you know, the city required to match twenty percent of the project funds, estimated to be at forty-five thousand six hundred fifty. I know that's just a rough ballpark guess right now, but here's my thought, if, you know, if you go up by ten, fifteen, twenty thousand, let's say it's sixty-five thousand, okay? You can get the kind of bathroom that this community, uh, would like to have, uh, long-term, for sixty grand, that's a pretty good deal. You know, and I think that what's happened, I think, you know, some of us are pretty old school, and people like me, we go camping a lot, so to me, hey, that bathroom's a lap of luxury, but I got a feeling that this generation, it ain't the lap of luxury. Uh, hey, Peter, could you, could you verify that, I know you talk to a lot of people, I hate to say, uh, younger, but you do? Just wondering what he hears around town.
Uh, what was the question?
What do you hear, you, you, you're talking about the bathroom an awful lot early on, and, uh, what kind of bathroom are these peo- are the people that you know, the young parents nowadays, what are, what are they talking about, they're talking about a bathroom like this? Whereas the bathroom that we have now, just, uh, doesn't cut it for this generation?
Um, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you, kinda following what's going on, honestly.
Okay.
That's the, okay.
Okay, no problem, anyway, so that's where I'm coming from on it.
Okay, well, the thing, um, does anyone else have anything?
Well, so, we're being asked to look at the prefab versus, uh, basically a rema- Well, so we're being asked to look at the prefab versus basically a remodel of the, of the existing one out there?
Yes.
And this, the cost here for the prefab is the two, the turnkey prefab is two twenty-seven, is that right?
Nine sixty, yes.
Okay, compared to the remodel, and these funds could be used for a remodel as well?
They could, yes. And we don't know what a remodel, so first off, staff wants to ensure that the bathroom is the project that we want to move forward with. And the prefab was one that had came up previously. So I had reached out to the vendor and asked them to refresh what quote they had given us in prior years. So we don't know what it would cost to do a complete rehab on that. I do know that there are some issues with the slab or lack of slab in the bathroom because of drainage and stuff.
That seems to be the number one complaint is the lack of drainage there.
Yeah, so with this, you would get that new foundation in there and get that resolved. I don't know how much you could do with the existing structure out there.
Is this prefab the same footprint?
Yes, yeah. Even the electrical in the utility room, we picked this particular plan because it lines up with what is in the current bathroom.
What's the lifespan of the prefab versus?
Um, I, I don't know.
Well, one, one thing I'd be interested in seeing, seeing one, you know, before we decide to sign up for one. I'd like to be able to see one and talk to the people that have had it and then maybe one that's been in use for a period of time. Uh, my, what's the square footage of it? Do we know? Did I miss that? I probably did, cause they didn't do, I saw the numbers on it. But it doesn't look like it's any bigger. It looks like it's pretty much the same footprint.
It is. It's pretty much the same footprint.
Okay, so we're not gaining anything in size and this is a, you said a modular? How can that be a modular with block like that?
Yeah, they call it a prefabricated.
Well, that's interesting. Yeah, I'd like to see.
Concrete walls or something, maybe? I don't know.
Well, those look like block walls to me, but I'm not, I'm not looking at it with a set of blueprints in front of me either. But what I would like to see is like I said, I'd like to see one that's been implemented somewhere. I'd like to see one that's been in existence for a while. And then I would be able to make a more sound decision whether or not we want to get involved. Now, what we don't have is a set of plans to offer anyone to bid. If we had a set of blueprints, we'd be able to go out to bid and look at some comparative prices.
So, I mean, which is part of the discussion. So it sounds like everybody's on board for the bathroom part of it.
Yeah, I think if that's the wish of the community, that's what we should do.
So then the, the next step is if, if we wanted to get some kind of bids, then I'm gonna have to go have an engineer draw up some drawings in order to do that. So that's gonna incur some costs.
Absolutely. You're gonna spend probably five to ten thousand bucks on plans. Before we do that though, why don't we take an opportunity to look at the existing offer here and see whether or not that would be enough to appease everyone? So we wouldn't have to spend it. But if it's not something we're comfortable with, then maybe we need to spend the money for a legitimate set of plans. But let's do our due diligence and then that way we can feel good about what the end result's gonna be.
Okay, so.
Tammy, this is, Tammy, this is Mark Velasquez. Would the city be required to, would you be sending out a request for proposal if the council's decision is to go forward with a bathroom?
We'd have to.
Eventually, yeah. Decide, once we decide which direction we wanted to go to. Whether we wanted to do the prefab, I would have to acquire a couple of their bids on the prefab if I can. I'm not sure. I haven't did that much research on it. Or if we were gonna do a remodel, then it would definitely go out for like a construction bid.
But I think the ma, what was the major concerns when, when the, when the public spoke about they wanted a new bathroom? Was it the size? Was it the lack of heat? Was it the lack of drainage? Was it the lack of cleanliness? I would like to know what their concerns were so we can get a better idea what we're dealing with.
Drainage.
Yeah, I don't think that I've heard a lot of, about the size.
So size wasn't?
Heard about, no, it's cosmetic, like the, the looks, the aesthetics.
The aesthetics, okay.
Yeah, the drainage. I know we, we did some, you know, small, what we could improvements in there. And I believe with this prefab, you can also set the doors to auto lock and auto unlock based on times. So you can lock it at night and not have to worry about that.
Now, if it's gonna be a foundation removal and replaced, it's still gonna be at ground level, otherwise we're gonna have issues with ramps.
Correct.
And then the other thing in this new one, we're gonna have to incorporate all the handicap features that we're a little derelict in the other one. You're gonna have bars.
The layout has handicap.
Addresses all that. Okay, good, good, good.
It's got the same capacity as in the existing bathrooms, correct?
That's what they're saying.
The same number of units or stalls.
Okay.
Fixtures.
And fixtures, yes.
How can we get a thumbnail sketch out of what it would cost to remodel?
Well, we could, well, we would look at the square footage. Now, the thing is, if the drainage is a problem, that means they're probably gonna have to saw cut the concrete floor
Oh, yeah.
and readdress where the, where it's going, because if there's a problem, it's either too small or the, or the grade is not good enough. So I don't know what that's gonna entail, okay? But that could be the major cost right in that. And then if you could saw cut that, address those issues and then resurface where you've cut with tile, put tile in each of those, like a nice tile on them, you could upgrade that thing, but it'd be a lot less obviously than doing that, but at the same time, we don't want to do something that's just kind of not so good. I mean, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right.
We have an opportunity to fix it right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Funding, so and we have till June to sort it out, so.
Oh, good.
Tammy, you said they had previously quoted us a price for the same bathroom, is that correct? What was their previous quote?
It, it wasn't that far off from this.
Who were they?
Uh, this is with the restroom, what is their names?
Public restroom company?
Yeah, Public Restroom Company.
I'm a little suspect because they came just under budget of what that fund and our obligation is to that.
Oh.
I'm a little concerned about that.
Actually, they didn't know what the, they didn't know the amounts.
Just conveniently barely under, so it's like, that's a little suspect.
But I agree with Councilmember Legero, probably the very first question, just for that of it is, is what are we looking at the lifespan on one of these?
That's a big one.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Why we're gonna look at one that's been installed recently and one that's been in ordinance for, installed for a while. That way we can get a feedback, plus we'll talk to people that have them, that have, you know, they're gonna be able to tell us, hey, don't do it. God, it's a great deal, you know?
Or they may say, yeah, hey, always do a remodel instead, or they may say never do a remodel.
Exactly.
Which is the way to, who knows?
Well, the advantage of a remodel versus this one, I, I don't know, it might be built better, but this, this thing doesn't look like a modular. It looks like it's a, uh, put together like a regular building.
Yeah.
Like you'd see a rest stop or something.
Yeah, exactly.
With the remodel, are we tied to prevailing wage to whoever does a remodel?
Anything we spend our money on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, okay.
We're stuck no matter what.
The, uh.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
The restrictions on the property too. Is the, is the park out there made up of separate parcels?
Yes.
So the parcel that the bathroom sits on, is that just that front piece where the playground equipment is?
Um, I can't remember if it's tied to the ball fields or not.
Not that it really matters, but I was curious if it would tie up the whole Hogan Park or Hogan Ennis Park or if it would just be.
It would be whatever parcel it's on, so that parcel number, so I can look and see.
So what do we move forward here now? We've got an idea.
So I have some homework to do. I know that I'm gonna continue forward along the bathroom path and that's really what I wanted to make sure.
Well, it makes sense.
Yeah.
And could you kind of get us, uh, from the owner, the builders, a list of where they've installed these throughout the local area?
Yes.
I mean, if it's in Canada, I'm not interested, but if it's local, it's kind of fine.
Yes.
If we'd like to see two or three.
You also ask them how much if we were to go whatever the next size up is.
That's a good point too.
Potential, if we wanted to look at that, okay. If it's only another twenty thousand dollars and we get four more stalls or something for some growth going forward, might not be a bad idea to take a look at that anyways.
Wow, that's a great idea. Yeah, we're, we're gonna obviously grow a little bit and why not deal with it now? Good point.
That's what I'm saying, cause otherwise we're gonna end up building another bathroom on another part of that facility. We can.
Okay.
It makes sense.
Can we beat this up enough?
Well, the, the, how's the parking out there? Is it?
It is what it is.
Has it satisfied the need, well, I guess we can't tell now.
Yeah, unfortunately, we haven't really, I mean, we got to opening day last year for baseball and the overflow parking was used. And then that was pretty much where it ended, unfortunately.
That's a, that's a project to consider down the road though, actually paving that area and all that.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Yep, okay.
Cause I think the skate park was third on the survey, just saying.
Okay, then. Uh, we done with this one?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to number seven. Consider the twenty twenty-one local appointments list continued from the service summit. And I think there's only two or three. I think Councilman Bellinger has agreed to do the cog.
Yes.
Uh, we have one, we need somebody to do a cemetery represented from the city. Do we have anyone offered to do that? Robert, put your hand down.
I probably ought to do something. I probably ought to do something.
Robert will take the cemetery.
So, um.
Do it.
So the advisory water commission, Walt was on.
Right, we need that one more person on that.
Yeah.
Want to join me?
I'll, I'll be your alternate.
Okay, we have an alternate now.
Okay, so, so Ed Yul will be the primary.
That sounds like it.
And Legero is the alternate.
Congratulations.
Smooth.
And then the CDBG HUD Policy Advisory Committee, are we gonna just keep that as is?
Yeah, I mean, who's, it's Robert and Jeff.
It's Robert and Jeff, yes, so we're good there. Um, and League of California Cities, we have Ed and Peter.
I'll keep it.
So we'll keep those. And Integrated Waste Management Committee, Ed and Robert.
Yeah, we're good.
Yep, yep.
Um. Personnel committee is Ed and Robert.
Good, unless somebody else wants it.
And then we did add to this appointment list too, the planning commissioners, just FYI, that they were added into the listing.
Correct, correct. Right.
And Recreation.
And Recreation Commission. Um, Planning Commission Appointment Committee is Ed and Jeff.
Right.
And then our Recreation Commission, which by the way, we do have a vacant seat there.
Have we advertised it?
Yes.
Okay, how long?
Uh, well, I ran two or three times. I haven't recently because we really haven't had any recreation.
Going on.
So then on the Council of Governments, we're gonna put Bellinger in the place of Walt Merkin.
Correct.
And Gracie to be reappointed for the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Willing, we would love to have her.
Yes.
Thank you, Gracie.
Um, Air Pollution Control District is Peter Crummick and Jeff Legero. And we're still good there. And then the cemetery, we are going to put Robert Swift in for Merkin.
Right.
Hey, this, this is Mark. I've got a question. Cemetery district, districts, it's kind of my thing. I have a little niche practice dealing with a lot of public cemetery districts. So I got a question. Is the Escalon District Cemetery District an independent special district or a dependent one?
Don't know.
I'm gonna find out.
The, the county really oversees the district.
Well, sure. So if it was a, if it's a independent special district, which are, most are, the only thing the board, it's a separate public entity. And the only thing the Board of Supervisors do is appoint the trustees to that board that then sees that district. They actually don't even have authority or power to remove them unless they want to replace the whole board with the Board of Supervisors. So in which case, us here wouldn't have anything to do with that. Now, if it's a dependent cemetery, uh, district of the county, then the county sets up how its governance structure is and it might be that the city has somebody on there. But I guess all of this is to say, I think we need to know what this position really is. Cause if they're a special, independent special district, this should just be dropped and Robert, you won't have to worry about a thing. Or, and if it's a dependent, we need to know what exactly the position is that we're appointing the council member to.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we could leave it for here, just it, it begs the question of what this appointment really is.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Yeah.
Um.
What'd you say, mosquito?
Mosquito, are you, I don't, you must not be up.
We got your name on there. Just keep it, right?
Till twenty-two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not up until June of twenty-two. Two years. It looks like we just appointed you in June of twenty-twenty. Nope, you're on there.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
You're okay with that, right?
Are we done with those now? Are we okay?
Yes, so you guys will just.
Any more input on that, gentlemen? You got any more to say? If not, we're moving on. We gotta go to number eight. Number eight, consider the new landscaping lighting maintenance district for the entire Sunrise Terrace Development. Replace an existing landscaping maintenance district number ninety-six dash one. Staff?
So in May of two thousand eighteen, when we were processing our annual reports for the Sunrise Landscape District, um, there was discussion about the financial position of the district. The city council agreed that staff should pursue looking at the Prop two eighteen process to have an annual inflator added to the district. Staff has discussed, has had discussion with Harrison Associates regarding the process and the district. The Sunrise Terrace District was formed in nineteen ninety-six just prior to the implementation of Proposition two eighteen. And as a result, does not have an annual escalator clause. Although the current assessments are sufficient to fund the annual maintenance costs, there are no additional funds available to pay for the replacement of the play structure in the district park. And as costs continue to rise, the current assessment will be unable to fully fund the annual maintenance cost. The district does not include the entire Sunrise Terrace Development. The first two phases of the development were built prior to the formation of the original district. There are no landscape improvements within the boundary area of frontage of these phases. They do receive special benefit from street lighting, the use and of, and access to the dinosaur park as do the other phases. The attached proposal includes establishing a new landscaping and lighting maintenance district for the entire Sunrise Terrace Development, replacing the existing district with including the first two phases of the development, the Park Basin area located on the southeast corner of Tracy Lane and Shalane could also be included as the ma, as a maintenance item in the new district. Um, the benefits to forming a new district are the total number of parcels included in the new district would be one forty-five, sixty-four parcels from phase one and two of the development and eighty-one parcels from phase three through, through five. With a total of a hundred and forty-five parcels being assessed for the improvements and services provided, it may be possible to actually lower the assessment to the parcels currently being assessed in the original district. With the formation of the new district, an annual inflator would be included in the method of assessment so the assessment rate can keep up with future inflation. If a new district is formed, the original district would be dissolved. After the new district is approved, the city council can simply dissolve the original district by resolution. Any existing fund balances would be transferred to the new district. If the assessment rate for the new district is less than the assessment rate for the original district, the eighty-one parcel, parcel owners in the original district would likely be in favor of forming the new district. With those property owners likely in favor of the new district, there will be reduced, this will reduce the likelihood of a majority protest in the ballot process. So the total fee that's being proposed from Harrison Associates for this project is twelve thousand, five hundred and there would still be some additional costs from the city attorney's office for assistance in the process. These costs would come from the newly formed district if approved. And if the new district fails to be approved, the cost for the process should come from the existing district. Since the current district does not currently have the funding, it could possibly require the monies to come from the general fund. So staff is looking for discussion regarding the pros, proposal from the city council and get direction on, thoughts on how to proceed with this.
Well, then, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so having lived in the Sunrise Terrace District before, it's the original eighty-one parcels that are around Libby and uh, the different courts back there, right?
Yeah, so the map that's on the screen now, the gray area is phases three through five and are in the current district. And then the blue and the purple are phase one and phase two.
So, so the phase one and phase two areas, the blue and the purple there, are, do they have any kind of maintenance fees? So, so, the phase one and phase two areas, the blue and the purple there, are, do they have any kind of maintenance fees or district currently?
They do not.
So, it would be a, an, an additional charge to each one of those parcels?
That is correct.
And the idea is that it will, may potentially benefit the eighty-one parcels that are in the original district?
That have paid for the, those benefits the whole time.
And you're spreading that, that cost out across those two additional parcels?
Correct.
So, I think that's gonna be a problem.
Sure.
My question is, on this piece here, these, the units, the city parcels, is that gonna be included in this new district as well? Or is that just separate? Where it says, uh, city of Escalon Parcels, is that gonna be included in the new formation? On your map?
Is that the, um?
The white ones?
That's the parks.
No, 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 uh, on Stanis, it says Stanislav Street, adjacent to that, those units there.
Oh, those white ones over there are not part of this.
Okay, so that has.
That's a separate subdivision.
That has nothing to do with anything.
Mm-mm.
Okay, so that's out of the picture. Back to what Jeff was saying, so, currently, one and two have no fees at all for their streets and lighting and all that.
Correct. Right.
Okay, and then the other one, if I understand, three and five do. And the reason that happened is why, why is it?
Well, I, I, I have to make an assumption that when they did phase one and two, there were no, um.
Districts formed.
They didn't, they didn't think about the district, forming the district, so then they came along to phase three and phase five, that included a playground equipment. And some more, um, road frontage landscaping and decided they needed to do the district and form the district after one and two.
Well, the, the three and five, or the one and two that don't have it, what incentives do they have to get it, I mean, why would they want it?
Um. I don't know that there would be a reason why they would want it.
I think that might be the problem.
I mean, except for that they're paying maybe for their fair share.
Well. That's my question, on, uh, phase one and two that aren't paying anything currently, is the fund for the other phases, three through five, paying for landscape and lighting that happens in phase one and two? Is there, is there maintenance landscaping that's going on that they're not paying for?
So, the.
In phase one and two?
So, there is, this is a storm basin on the corner of Shalane and Tracy, and that storm basin is being paid from the general fund.
Where's the storm drain?
Um, at Shalane on the corner there, that large blue.
Right here?
Right there.
Oh, that, okay.
Ironically, yeah.
And that's, who's paying for that?
The general fund does.
And what's it cost us annually?
Um, I wanna say it's roughly around twenty-four hundred dollars.
And what does that entail, basically the mowing of the lawn and?
It's just mowing there.
That's, I know where it's at now, I got it better.
And then, um, any streetlights that are in those phases are not included in the district, so those come out of the general fund also.
So, the lighting districts in one and two are not covered, right?
No, correct.
What's the cost of that?
I don't know the cost of those streetlights.
Let's get the cost of that.
But I would say estimating based on what was in three through five, I estimated it roughly around, um, fifteen hundred dollars annually.
Okay, well, that's all right, so now we're looking at about two thousand, three thousand, almost four, three thousand dollars, four thousand.
The, in the original district, it's, it's a fixed rate, what, a hundred and twenty?
One twenty-one sixty-eight, yeah.
That was my last question.
So.
Annually?
Annually.
Mm-hmm.
And they're, so, if they, if they, those eighty-one parcels were to agree to this, then they have the, the potential for it to go down, but also the potential for it to go up.
They would, that is true.
So, just like.
So, to start out, it would, it could potentially be lower, but as time progresses, it could potentially go up.
And it would be the three percent per year?
Yes, that's what's being recommended by the, the engineer at this time.
Okay, this is a, what, a seven, two seventeen, or what do they call it, a seventy?
Probably two eighteen.
Two eighteen.
Yes.
Two eighteen, so it, it'll have to go to a vote anyway.
Correct.
Well.
This is being driven because the park equipment currently needs to be replaced then, is that what we're?
It's, it's both, so we've been trying to, we have been trying to set monies aside to be able to replace that equipment when it's time, and.
It's a dinosaur park, isn't it?
Yes, and the, the last two years, the maintenance is costing so much that we are not able to put monies away for that playground equipment.
There's no cost.
So, when we were doing our annual report, that was noted, and so, it was indicated that we should look at going out and trying to get the annual inflator. So, our option is, we can go out and try and do a whole new district, or we go out to the eighty-one parcels and ask for them to modify the district. To include an, an inflator.
Like, like we did at, um, oh gosh, was that Westwood over here, what they want?
Uh, but we didn't.
Playground?
We didn't do an increase to them because they had a surplus in reserves. But we did go out and poll and make sure that they would support the addition of the playground using the money, we did have to do that part of it.
Yeah.
Cause it did add additional potential maintenance in the future for that. So, in essence, I mean, it, it could have, you know, increased their, their cost too.
What is the park maintenance cost roughly per year?
Um, I believe it is right around the twenty-four hundred or three thousand, I think, I wanna say it was two forty a month.
What do they do for that money there, what's going on with that, mowing the lawn, watering?
Well, okay, so that's not just the park, because that's also the landscape that's on, along Miller, um, on the back wall.
Okay.
And that's, that landscape and the park with the tree trimming and stuff.
Okay.
So, it makes sense to at least look at that phase two annex, because if the, if the cost is really associated with the maintenance of the frontage on Escalon below the. And then the dinosaur park, and then also the, the maintenance of the storm basin park area. That makes sense that you would reach out and make that entire block, um, a district. I'm, I'm torn on the phase one, the purple, because that doesn't seem to have that connection over there, um, for use of the.
Not contiguous.
The park and stuff, yeah.
Well, well, I'm gonna agree with Councilmember Leggero on that very same point, that's what I was thinking too, I mean, it does make more sense, you know, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but, how do you sell it? And I can see possibly being able to justify it to phase two, but, you know, I think Councilmember Leggero is correct, phase one, their first reaction is, what do you mean Sunrise Terrace? Half of them may not even know that they're in a.
Yeah, that they were in that development.
So, I think I might, that might be a real hard sell that might be what trips us up on this one, including phase one.
Let me ask you this, uh, because they're not in any district, it's upon the city's, it's the city's responsibility for lighting and landscaping for that, uh, number one, or the purple, or the.
For both, the purple and the blue.
Okay, but if, like they said, if the one's it's continual to the other, and that could, that might be an easier sell for them than the other one.
How much one, phase two, it'll be an easier sell than phase one also?
Phase one being which color, Robert?
Purple.
Okay, phase one, I think would be, um, an easier sell than phase two, but I think phase two, they're getting benefits from us by, what, we, we keep up the lighting, we also probably do upgrade on the lighting. And we take care of the, well, the parts on the other side over there.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think, I think you meant phase two, phase two is the one with the park in it.
Yes.
And that's why I think you're saying that might be an easier sell, and that's what Councilmember Leggero was saying too, then including both phase two and phase one, which is on the south side of Miller. And Miller has a major thoroughfare, it almost looks like a logical dividing line, so then, you know.
If you, um, I did some quick math here, if you only include phase two in there and you, you add in that rough twenty-four hundred for landscaping, say fifteen hundred for lights. You get a hundred and seven properties in that, and you add in the, what they're currently paying for the eighty-one houses, if that's pretty much a sum-zero game right there. Um, you divide that out and you add that thirty-nine hundred, it's gonna go up to like a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And that's no excess, that's just to cover what you currently existing have, so everybody's gonna go up.
So, the fifteen hundred dollars might be high too, because you're not gonna have the streetlights in that other phase two, but, I mean, I don't think it's gonna change it that much.
There's no savings going on for the equipment, I don't know how much you're wanting to accumulate annually for that.
It's like six hundred, six hundred and fifty dollars annually that we were setting aside for the, um, playground equipment.
And that's the normal amortization on that, okay.
I think it was five eighty-two, but in my mind, I'm thinking that we're gonna have to bump it up because we haven't collected.
Okay, so if we present this to them, first of all, does the current district have any funds?
Um, they, there is minimal funds, um.
What's the balance in there?
So, there's approximately fifty-four hundred dollars that has been set aside for the playground equipment, and they have about thirty-eight hundred, thirty-nine hundred dollars of operating reserve.
So, what happens if we decide to go with this and then there's this twelve thousand five hundred dollar bit, uh, cost, where's that gonna come from?
Well, they don't have the money, it's gonna come from general fund.
So, we're gonna take a hit on that.
Will that fund pay us back?
Well. If, if it was to pass with a, with an escalator, yes, then you could, you could fi- um, figure in the repayment of it. But if it doesn't pass, then you're not gonna get that money back because you're barely paying to get your maintenance done at this, at this point.
How much do we subsidize that district a year?
We're not subsidizing it right now, we're just not feeding any more money into their capital reserve.
You're looking about six grand, let's see, three, four grand.
But the twenty-six homes in phase two are getting a pass on the maintenance of the storm drain and the lights, then we're eating that cost.
Correct.
Okay, that's gonna be interesting.
There's no way, so if you went into, say, phase one and went to LEDs and replaced all the streetlights with LEDs in there, there's no way to go to those parcels to recover that cost, right?
No, you'd have to have a district.
Have we thought about LEDs in that area?
Um, well, I know that we've, we've replaced some lights, like each year with some LEDs, I'm not for sure if that area has been done or not.
Might be a way to, I think you're gonna have a hard time saying, hey, yeah, please, you know, tax us.
Right, right.
Create a district and tax us for something that we're not paying for right now, so, I, maybe we need to look at how do we reduce the maintenance cost in there? Through the replacement of those lights with LEDs, they don't seem to have the, the landscape maintenance issue that, that the, uh, phase.
Two.
Two and, and the original district have, right?
Correct.
So, it really becomes a, uh, streetlight.
Primarily that, I mean, directly adjacent to them, yes, would be just streetlights, whether they use those parks.
Right.
They're gonna argue, they are gonna, they're gonna argue they go to the high school.
Right.
Yeah, or they go to Ogden.
Yeah.
Hey, this, this is Mark Velasquez, it is a public, um, hearing, it's on the agenda for a public hearing, maybe this is a good time to see if anybody from the public wants to, um.
Alrighty, well, let's, uh, open up the public.
It is?
All right, we're gonna open up the public hearing for some input.
It's just under administrative matters.
It's not, oh, good, we don't need to do that.
My apologies, you're right.
Tammy, how many?
But it doesn't, I mean, we can still take input.
Oh, yeah, definitely, um, how many other parks?
Uh, hold on just a moment, Kurt.
How many other parks and storm drains do we currently have in the city that we maintain because they're not part of a district?
I would say four, three or four for sure.
Three or four other?
Sanchez, Lada, Brentwood.
Reed.
Four, four for sure.
Four. Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Kurt.
Oh, okay, thank you, Tammy, uh, yeah, just a couple of things, um, when I read this, I was, uh, curious about the, the timing of it all with COVID and, and people being out of work and what have you, so. Uh, maybe a consideration to think about the timing of when you wanna do this. Uh, number two, uh, this is like, uh, the big guys against the little guys, uh, i- if there were eighty-one homes in, in the, uh. Three through five phase, and eighty-one homes in the one, two phase, would you bring during this up? I don't know, uh, I, I was just curious about that. Uh, number three is, uh, Tammy, who does the landscaping out there now?
It's Swift Lawn and Garden.
Uh, is it appropriate not to recuse oneself?
It's a discussion only, it's not being voted on at this point.
Oh, I understand, I just wondered, um, the, the one thing I do like about this is this could be a template for, uh, i- if it should succeed. Moving forward to eventually getting the entire city under LLCs, for example, uh, Vela Terra, Belterra. We could incorporate the rest of California, Edgewood, Mosswood, because we'll have more homes, uh, than those areas are, and they, they do get to use the park. And, uh, you could use the same logic, so, uh, from that standpoint, uh, it'll be interesting to see if this does go through, so, thank you.
My question is, how do you approach them, we say, listen, we wanna know if we can charge you guys more for doing nothing more, and is that okay with you guys? I mean, it's, that's the sell, I mean.
Well, I know, the sell is that you've reaped the benefits from not having been in established district for so many years.
They would argue they pay property taxes and all the other crap I hear all the time, but.
Right, but so does that, those other three phases, and they've paid for a district.
Well, we could, we could pitch it to them in a way that it would benefit them in the fact that they would get more upgrades and better service products.
Well, I mean, you ensure that that playground equipment can be in that park, because ultimately, that's what you're risking.
Is park ever, is it used a lot?
It's used, I mean, the equipment gets used, yeah.
I don't, uh, hang out there, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like, it's elementary equipment, so.
Right.
Just by little, little kiddos.
Mm-hmm, it, yeah, it's much younger age.
Ironically, the other park, um, is used by older kids, and it's been used as a, uh, the old sliding ramp quite a bit this summer, where you see, which is why you see a big dead spot.
Are you talking about the pond over here?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, which is why we came back with some park rules.
Well, and, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, it's a discussion item, it was, you, you know, it was brought up that staff should bring this back, and I, you know, I totally understand timing wise. But this was discussion item to see what homework I need to do.
Gotta look at it eventually.
Yeah, what's tough about this one is, it's tough to make a slam dunk argument for doing it, that's the thing, because they have, they go on for so long without paying. They may not even know what a, you know, a landscape district is, and.
Right.
How do you make that argument now to, you know, e- even phase two, which I think you could make the argument, phase one is gonna be a real tough sell.
Agreed.
Phase one's almost impossible.
It's a bad idea.
You do your due diligence, you're buying a house, and you're asking about the taxes within your bill that you're gonna receive, what are the different bonds in this town you're buying? You make a setup when you're purchasing a home, I would hope, that would be included, and all of a sudden, you think you're good ten years later, now we're gonna ask them to pay more, that's a tough sell.
Sure.
I'm not sure, I mean.
So, i- and so if we reject this whole thing, basically we're down to sell, how are we gonna pay for replacing that equipment?
Right, so, I mean, we could not try to make one district, and then we go back to the existing eighty-one parcels and ask to put an inflator in there. Which, I mean, chances are, you're probably not gonna get that, you know, just the same as the, the other two phases don't wanna pay. When they haven't been paying, you know, the other three phases that have been paying, aren't gonna wanna increase it. So, then, then it goes to where you have to cut back services for what can be maintained, which maybe it is removing playground equipment, so you don't have to worry about that in the future.
How big is that lot where the park is?
On Libby?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not sure, it's, 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 it's a small.
Is it a buildable lot?
Uh, maybe.
About the size of one of the lots, I think.
One of the lots. Well, if they don't wanna pay for it, we just sell.
One or two lots of you.
Yeah.
Is it cost effective just to propose with phase two? I think Councilmember Bellinger, you're running some numbers, and it was pretty marginal.
It, it was.
It's gonna increase it.
It's gonna increase it.
Your prices are gonna go up just to cover the, what we have now, plus some sort of increase just to start saving for playground equipment. If you take in what we, they currently pay for the eighty-one, plus the twenty-four for landscaping and say fifteen hundred for lights, it might be high, but maybe that's part of your savings, you know, if that's it.
Right, yeah, but you're still.
Seven, eight bucks a month.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you, the, the real thing I'm thinking about in here is that playground equipment, because it is pricey, and how, how do you pay for that? And, um, I, I, you know, I, I have little down in my mind that phase two uses it just as well as, you know. And, um, I, you know, I, I have little down in my mind that phase two uses it just as well as, you know, phase one.
Well, are there grants available there, Tammy, for these types of things, for playground equipment?
Um, occasionally there are.
Well, as an option, or a possibility to, or as an option, maybe we could look at some possibility for grant. If it doesn't fly, at least we'll be looking for something to do something.
Typically, you're required to match.
Yeah, well, I'd rather match a little, I'd rather match a little bit than a lot.
The money we just spoke about for the bathroom, if those costs come in lower and there's extra money, can we apply that to playground equipment throughout the town?
That's an interesting idea, too.
If we're already throwing money in to match and we get a lower price on a bathroom, that money's available to spend.
Yep.
Is the playground equipment considered something that we can use that money's for?
Good point.
It is, it is. But you have other parks that have playground equipment in need, that are not in a district too.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, we have Lada Park and he says a few others that aren't even in there, there's other parks that aren't in any district at all. That we may be able to do some upgrades for, if needed.
Right.
Or put the money, well, you can't put the money inside, you have to spend it.
Maybe find somebody who wants to name the park after themselves and it's left still funded.
It's not a bad idea.
Or, or a business.
Mm-hmm.
Or a corporation.
Sometimes, that's, that's what you gotta do.
You know, call it, uh, Arco Park.
What you gotta do sometimes.
Okay, I think we beat this up enough until, not, until.
So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, this is Mark, Mark again, um, you're right, I'm sorry, it's not under, um, public hearing, but the council does take public input. On the agenda items as they come up, should we just make sure that there's no other, um, public comments before we, on this item before you?
Alrighty, well, if anyone out there on the phone or, uh, watching us on, uh, television or computers. If there's some input you'd like to add, this is the time to do it. Well, it doesn't sound like there's a heavy concern, so we're gonna move on and close it. And I think what we're gonna do basically is what, we're gonna study it some more or what?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking, do we, do we want it?
Well?
Evaluate only doing phase two, do we want to?
Yeah, what would that look like, we only did phase two, would that be a decent direction?
Well, we've gone through that already, it's gonna raise their fees, and like he said, you know, it's gonna be, he- here's the bottom line. What I think we oughta consider doing is sending notices out to the people in the district and say, hey, look. The city would like some feedback on whether or not this park is important to you or not. And if it is, would you be willing to contribute to the keeping it, and this is what it's gonna be? If not, we're considering possibly maybe closing it.
I don't know, but.
Well, I mean, if you don't have the money.
I think the real threat, threat is the playground equipment, not being able to replace that, you know.
Well, it's gonna be ragged.
We would have to eventually take, at the end of its life, we would have to take it down.
You also have landscaping issue here, too.
Well, yeah, with the landscaping, landscaping, that's.
I mean, I'm just saying.
But.
I don't know how else you're gonna approach it.
The park equipment's probably the pricey, I have no idea.
What do you think it costs for new equipment?
So, um, I was just looking in the report and we estimated that equipment to be about twenty-one thousand at the time. Um, but I bet you right now, it's probably twenty-five to thirty.
Wow.
Yeah.
I actually just got some bids about three months ago, and that, that park is twenty-eight thousand for a replacement of that playground.
Yeah.
Damn. Why is that a hundred and twenty-one dollars per parcel not enough? If it, if it's just a minimal landscaping cost?
Uh, there's water, there's utility costs that are included, electricity.
For, for what?
For water, for landscape, electricity for timers on the landscape, it's minimal. Um, the engineers, uh, charges for the annual report. Um, street lighting, construction.
Excuse me, what is the annual report?
That's the report that comes to you guys, um, for the assessment.
What, the report he's giving us tells us what, I don't understand that.
Tells it, tells you like where the. It has estimated cost for the next year and what we're going to it.
The whole development?
That's for the whole district.
Okay.
Yeah.
What does that cost?
Um, it costs us about twelve seventy-five a year, thirteen hundred dollars a year.
Is that per district or?
That's, that's for this district, each, each district is different.
Same company's been doing it?
Yes.
Good gig.
Yeah.
Had a whole lot of effort there for twelve hundred bucks.
Um, that's actually a discount compared to what we were getting from the previous company, believe it or not.
So, okay, so when you add up all the, those annual costs.
Mm-hmm, and there is some administration fees in there, so it's about ten thousand, two hundred dollars, um, a year.
What do we got, David, for the?
For.
Well, that's, we collect less than that.
Oh, nice.
We're collecting less than that currently.
Okay.
We're like ninety-eight hundred and change.
Ninety-seven, twenty-three, twenty-four is what I had for last year.
We're about a thousand, yeah?
I like the idea of sending the notice out, say, here's the numbers, this is what it, it costs, if you want that park in there, this is what. It takes, and if they, they say no, then we have to figure out how to make sure that what money we are collecting is it. Cause we can't subsidize it necessarily with the general fund. Although they are community parks and they're available to everybody to use, so, I don't know, it's interesting.
It, it is, it's a hard one.
Mm-hmm.
But I think, you know, if you, if you were gonna focus on an area to start, start replacing with LEDs and start to. Improve, um, the efficiencies, you know, I certainly would look at that phase one.
Yep.
Um, cause I'm pretty confident they're not gonna vote for a new tax on themselves, ever. Good times are bad times, so if we can start to look at ways to minimize those maintenance costs and, you know. Electric costs and things like that, then we're moving in the right direction to minimize the, the hit to the general fund.
Well, I have a crazy idea. Let's gate it. Put gates on both sides. We'll gate it and tell them it's all theirs. They'd be upset over that, but hey, it would increase their property values. And give them security, only people come and go if they have the little deal. Well.
It's a toughie.
We're just gonna, I guess, what's the council's desire here, what do you guys wanna do?
Your idea of just sending out some notices and seeing what the feedback is.
Well, Tammy, do you think we can do that?
Or get it on the agenda and send out notices to them for a public hearing on it, just to get some feedback.
The only, the only bad thing about, well, there's a couple of things, but the worst part is this whole time we're dealing with everything in a really rotten time.
Yeah.
It's, it's the worst time to do anything.
Sure.
And that's the hardest part, not, it's a bad sell in a good time, it's a horrible sell in a bad time.
Well, then, then maybe we table this idea and then you start looking at, okay, well, here's some money that might be available for. You know, to replace the equipment, look, there are money, so for things that we can do, you know, city side to, to try and.
So, I mean, right now, I guess we can table this and we can look at it next year and.
Don't forget the idea of possibly offering that park out to somebody who'd like to have sponsor the park with their name on it. There might be a business in town that would give you thirty, forty thousand dollars or whatever you, you think would be reasonable to have their name there.
Well, and not only that, but that little park has to be inspected every year, right, the playground equipment, or every other year, I don't know what the cycle is.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, how often it is.
I don't know where it's at in its lifespan, you know.
It's at the end, it's getting towards the end, yeah.
I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong, I agree with Councilmember Leggero on this, with your first thought. You know, if you just send something out, guys, here's where we're at, okay, of this playground equipment, it is older, we need a replacement. Okay, we don't have the funds within the current district to replace it. What do you guys think? I mean, they may be for, they may go, no, the heck with it, let it all fall down, yeah, who knows? I know there's still a decent makeup of older people and younger kids there, who knows, they might go for it. But I think if we just presented them, to them as a reality situation.
So, only to the existing district?
That's the other problem.
Yeah, well, I sure like to go phase two also, just see what they would think. I mean, basically our.
So, I mean, I guess, I guess we can, we can try and. Put some kind of noticing together, um, and see what we could do to get that out. And try and get some feedback on postcards or something, and go from there.
Explain as ea- as easily as possible.
Yeah.
Here's your little park here, everybody knows your dinosaur park, here's the situation. You know, um, we don't have the money now to replace it with our current assessment, we would have to extend this new area out. I don't know if I'd even mess with phase one, cause I, again, I agree with Councilmember Leggero and Mayor. I was, I think it's just gonna be an uphill battle, that I don't think they're gonna see, you know, the value returned for their money. Um, but yeah, that's what I would suggest, just send, send, uh, something out and say, guys, here's honestly where we're at. Let's say, you know.
So, I guess the consensus is, we either we table this for a while or we go with a, a letter out to people. What's the consensus of this council, what do you guys wanna do, the letter or wait a while?
I might do the letter. The ones that are getting younger.
Well, and I don't, and I mean, it's not gonna be like, you know, right away, you know.
Okay, so what do you got, Dave, you're in for a letter or you wanna wait?
Tough because, yeah, it's the worst time in the world to even approach the subject, honestly. I'd almost say table it for six months.
Okay, Jeff?
I'm good with that.
Robert, we have two tables, and what do you feel?
Well, I prefer the letter, I just don't know how much time we have on the, the tabling, I mean, I'm on the, uh, the equipment.
Alright, well, equipment ain't gonna fall apart in six months, but, uh, I'm gonna join the other two gentlemen, I'm gonna go with the table, you know what?
And Peter?
Peter, uh, what's your feeling on this? Are you with us, Peter?
Uh, yeah, I'm here. I've been trying to follow along the best I can, you know, with the audio and, and what's going on, and, um, I think I heard that. We can push this out a little bit and explore it more for another meeting, did I hear that right?
I think you got that right.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Alright, then, as it stands, we, four of us agree that, you gonna go?
No, no, stick with where you're at.
Okay, we have four of us that are, uh, in the six months and one that's into the letter, so we're gonna go with the idea of setting out.
Okay, alright, doesn't mean that I can't work on a letter in the meantime.
That's right, you can work on.
And I can bring it back and have something that I'm gonna send out to them.
Very good.
See which lights have already been switched out to LEDs and.
Alright.
Yes.
Know if we've already done that, with the best savings possible now versus, you know, we could do something.
Absolutely, in the meantime, I still wanna explore the ideas, offered it to businesses as an opportunity to advertise. Their business as a park, I mean, that's, you know, it's like a skate park.
I mean, we're in a time, you know.
Well.
Yeah.
We're in a horrible time. Alright, anyway, we're gonna move on to council communications, uh, Councilman Bellinger, what do you got?
Uh, not a lot.
Excuse me, one, one second, Mr. Mayor, it's Mark Velasquez, sorry. Hey, we missed, um, public comment in items six and seven, just, I would suggest we cure it just by seeing if there's any pop, public comment on those items now.
Okay, well, to go back to that, if there's anyone on phone or on. Computer or television that would like to add any comment to six, seven, or eight, we entertain it. We did have some, I think Kurt called in.
Kurt called on one, yeah.
That's about the only thing we had, and I think that's probably all we're gonna have.
So six was the bathrooms, seven were the appointments, and eight was the sunrise days.
People, yeah, okay, so I don't hear anybody making an effort to comment, so we'll move all past that, thank you, Mark, for the reminder. Uh, we're gonna move.
Thank you.
And we're gonna move on to council communications, uh, Councilman Bellinger.
Um, just wanted to say, Esclon, we did a great job coming out to our, uh, Christmas parade. I think that it was well received, I think we ran out of flyers pretty quick out there. Um, I think we had a non-stop stream, we didn't even get a, see a break in the traffic coming through town for over two hours. That was just great to see the community out there, I got nothing but positive response from that activity. It's what everybody needed, it was great.
It was incredible.
Yeah, great job everybody involved in putting that together, thank you for all the hard work.
Councilman, uh, Crummidge, would you like to add anything? Guess not. Alright, we'll take that as a no. Uh, Councilman Swift?
Yeah, I'd like to echo, uh, what Councilmember Bellinger was saying regarding the community, it was great to see the, uh, the community, uh, come out and, uh, support. Uh, the parade, I think it would've been a great movie night, you know, like I said, it was just a little rainy, but I got a feeling it's gonna be a winner, that should be done again, I think, uh, we gotta give, uh. Tammy Alcanner a lot of kudos for that, and of course, the parade, I'm gonna mention their names again, Sonia Huff and Debbie Merkin. Did a great job of making that happen this year, even the decorating contest, the, uh, house decorating contest, I think. Oh, boy, I forget how many hundreds of votes we had altogether, but that tells you.
The winner was like a hundred and seven votes or something like that, so.
It, it was well received, and that, that's community, this is exactly the shot arm this community needed. I do wanna give one, I want more kudo in, regarding the parade, and that was the operations plan, again, Tammy Alcanner had a lot to do with that. Chief Lackey, Public Works End, the PD. Uh, I talked with a few people, were, and, uh, come to find out there, they also had stationary parades, one down south. One, I think, in the Sonora area, something like that. And both cases, boy, the big Achilles' heel with those parades for the logistics trying to get in, it was a little sloppy. Uh, talking with people here at this parade, um, yeah, took a few minutes to get in, but short of that, it was smooth sailing. So to be able to funnel that many cars through, and again, Councilmember Bellinger, over two hours. Of, uh, cars coming in to funnel that many cars through in an efficient manner, I think that. That kudo needs to be given to the, the PD and you, Tammy, and the Public Works Department, so, other than that. Merry Christmas.
And kudos to Public Works for the screen.
Oh, yeah.
I tasked them with a very large movie screen that they did a great job on, so.
It did look great, it looked fantastic, and Merry Christmas, and that's it.
Alright, thank you, uh, Councilman Leggero, or, excuse me, Pro Tim?
Oh, well, thank you. Fancy, uh, yeah, I, I can't say anymore, can't really add anything to what's been said about, uh, Christmas on Main. The parade was fantastic, it was, uh, great to see so many people out and about and enjoying it. Uh, I can't believe you got snow on Main Street, that was impressive, actually piling up on cars and stuff, so. So now, it was just a great turnout, and I think that was, uh, a, a much better outcome than canceling it all together, so. Great job to everybody that put that on, and, uh, Merry Christmas as well, see you next year. That it? Thanks.
You're welcome. Um, I would echo everything said by all the council members, I think you guys pretty much covered everything. I would just, again, like to thank the police department and the staff for putting out the effort they did. Uh, the screen was kinda fun, it was a neat idea, I'm looking forward to doing that in the summertime. I think in the summertime, that'd be a hoot, but I don't think you should park the cars, and I think people should have blankets. And sit down on the ground and watch that thing, it'd be a lot more fun, I think.
Of course, I, you know, at this time, we couldn't, so, yeah.
Understood, but I think that's a nice community thing to do, and the nice thing is you're not having a train go by every two minutes. Um, so it was good, um. That, uh, the turning, the turnout was, it was almost unbelievable. We sat there on that trailer and we looked at each other like, okay, what time is people gonna quit doing this? And then went on, you know, which is great, I'm all for it, yeah. And Robert, thank you for putting in the trailer and, and all the hard work you did for the rest of the council members, I mean, we appreciate that, at least I do. And, um, Merry Christmas to everybody else, and I think we're gonna call it a night, anybody else got anything before I close out? Mark, you got anything you wanna add?
No.
Okay, then we're done.
No, no, thank you very much, have a wonderful holiday, everybody.
You as well.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Alright.
Bye, everybody.
You too.
And to all a good night.
And all a good night to us.
I thought you should say that.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Alrighty, okay then, well done, Mayor. Well, somebody has to do it, right?
Good night.